...to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, if we could have a moment of silence for men and women in uniform. Thank you very much. Let's start with number two, discussion of memorial bench. Oh, excuse me. Oh, that was a great... How we doing? There's a... Let's do the review of the minutes. I just thought I'd see if Tracy was on her toes. Need a motion.
Adjustments.
Do you want to do adjustments first, John? I think I know where they're all going.
Yeah.
Do you have more?
I just... Sorry, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Well, we don't you pay. It's okay to order.
Sorry. You only pay me by the day anyway. But I listened to some of the discussion on the, you know, from Sean McDougall on this upcoming deadline for the, you know, to put in a request for a grant. So I'd like to discuss that a little bit more. Just give you a little more information that might be helpful. And also, I don't know, we have some information to answer a few questions that was addressed by Mike Boragad at the last meeting. I don't know if you want to do that now or you want to propose something.
Um, let's start with McDougall. And then you want to talk about it now or you want to wait till...
Talk to you.
Let's do it now.
Okay.
In case we have some people that need to be dismissed early. This way they'll be here.
I, uh... The situation we're in right now is pretty interesting because all of this stems from a billion-dollar grant that was like additional to all the FAA funding that they adopted two years ago. And it's specifically designed for rural airports. So that's why we were able to get 100% funding on this addition to the runway. Um, I was unsure as to just what's going on with the requirement for the taxi strip and what that means. And hopefully, what I just gave you would enlighten you a little more what that means as to whether somebody could legally land in a cloudy situation or something like that. But here's my understanding of this process. The October 30th is the deadline to put in a letter of intent that we plan... We're planning a new project. And sometime during the next several months, FAA will look at all of those intent letters and decide which ones are worthy to request a full application going. So that would be the next May, just like this last May, we had to put one in for this latest project. And if that's approved, that would be 100% funding. So in the case of the taxiway, right now, the estimate's a $5 million. So our share would be 5% of that, or 250,000. But under this unique program, it's 100% FAA under program. So, um, to me, this should not be up to the town manager to decide this magnitude of a grant program, even though in the grant policy, it says pretty clearly that... Says the selectmen of the Town of Rangelay are interested in pursuing opportunities for monetary grants that have immediate benefit to the residents of Rangelay. The selectmen do and always shall, until an annual town meeting article does not pass, have the express opportunity to reject any and all grants once they are ready for disposition. The town manager will receive a standard form from employees prior to an employee pursuing any grant. The town manager shall give direction to proceed or not to proceed with the application. In the event that the town manager disapproves, employees may apply in writing through the town manager to present their opportunity to selectmen for approval. Now, that's fine on a safety grant from MMA that's worth $2,000. But for a $10 million grant that we've got, $11 million that we just received, that's a little much because what happens if the board, after all this effort, says, no, we don't want that? It's a whole year of wasted effort, engineering costs, and things like that. So this, this needs to be adjusted, in my mind.
The policy?
The policy. You would need to look at that and set a limit. I mean, these are piece, you know, the town manager should within limits, um, you know, have some authority on day-to-day issues, but not something of the magnitude that you have right now. So my recommendation is you have nothing to lose to put in this letter of intent right now for this deadline of October 30th because it's going to be off to FAA anyway. And if they decide, no, we're not going to get 100% grant, that same project is still in the 2021 state and federal capital improvement program, which if it were approved then, we would have to pay up 5% share. So you've got nothing to lose by simply putting in a letter of intent that we intend to apply for this next project. And, and this, hopefully, what I gave you will explain in a little more detail, a little clearer, why it's important that we eventually should have that taxi strip. So I guess what I, what I, you know, if you folks, majority of you, don't want to do this, I'm not going to put in, even though I have the authority, it seems, to this next taxiway project at the end of this month. I need you to say, okay, let's do it. And that's the real, and that's the better.
So we have two issues here. One is to address the policy, which we could do at a later date, certainly make it known that this is something that if the Board of Selectmen wants to change the policy, it's a good time to do it regarding this. And number two is get the applica... the letter of intent in so that we have time, and again, this is the critical component in my mind, we have time for the public hearings, which I think is important, we've requested, but the intent is in. So if we can have a one or two public hearings between now and May, we'll know what the sense from the taxpayers are and the citizenry here, if they want us to go forward with this thing.
And you'll also know whether FAA either thinks it's a worthwhile project.
Correct.
And they're the ones that will decide whether the taxiway is mandatory. That apparently is, you know, what our engineer has been trying to look into. Their decision based on whatever pilot information they receive from our pilots. And I'm not a pilot. I don't know anything about that kind of instrumentation or that. All I'm looking at this is if the town can save $250,000 on a project that may be required by FAA in the future, what have we got to lose to put in a letter of intent before this deadline, which would make us eligible for 100% funding? We've got nothing to lose. I could turn it down. If I, like Steve said, you'd have enough time to have public input.
Well, I think a public input's important, not just what's in this room meeting tonight. Not that that's enough, but bottom line is, if we open up to the public, we have done the due diligence necessary to ask the taxpayers what their thoughts are. But I think it's a mistake not to get the letter of intent in.
And, and I don't think it's right that I could say, back with all you guys and put this in because I think it's in the best interest of the town. That's your job. You're elected. I'm not. That's your job. So that, that policy definitely needs some restrictions on the town management and more authority to these major projects.
In regards to the letter of intent, do you have any questions for John? No? Cindy?
No, you said, um...
This is a perfect example of my wife and I's relationship. No means yes.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's a question or if it's just... So 2021, you mentioned that?
Okay. Apparently, this taxi project, and this is from a meeting I attended with the FAA was on the phone and the state was here. FAA had that project in 2023 in their federal capital improvement plan, the taxiway portion of this. The state said to them on the, while they were on the phone, that they had $18 million worth of projects already scheduled for 2023, but they only had $3 million worth of project for 2021. They recommended that they move it to 2021. So that's in the current state and federal FAA, state DOT capital improvement process. So that, and those are under normal projects, they, you know, they have to do these years ahead of time so they know how much money they need in the, you know, like this bond issue we're going to be voting on. I believe it's $106 million for transportation. Some of that will go to airports, some of that will go to the ferries, some of it will go to roads. So they, they need to know total sum of their responsibility for these projects well in advance to be able to make sure the money is available for their share. So that's, that's how it works. Do they have to plan this well ahead of time?
Well, is that Cindy? Donnie? Anything?
I have a lot of questions, but I mean, that can be answered. Peter, I just... What does this trigger? Does it trigger anything else?
This doesn't trigger anything. This is a letter of intent.
No, no, no. I mean, if we build this thing, does that trigger something that we don't know about yet?
I think it's a good question. I think we need to have the engineer folks here to answer that question later. And at the public hearing, those are the questions that in my mind need to come up.
Yeah.
How about you, Dave?
No questions.
All right. Um, regards to this, I need a motion for submission of the letter of intent.
So moved.
I'm sorry?
I said so moved.
Well, thank you. How about a second? Second. Any questions further? All in favor? Thank you. Now, regards to the policy, Cindy and I have got the book of policies that we've been going over, or individually, we've been going over. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm coming close to saying I have reviewed ad nauseam. We'll add one more to it, Cindy, and then bring it back to the board if we have any changes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, we can arrange some time to meet.
I shall do that.
And, yeah, compare notes.
Okay, very good. Second adjustment to the agenda is the request from Mr. Boragad. Give me a second here, I'll... Mr. Boragad requested from the Board of Selectmen to get him the date when the environmental impact assessment was, was done. I'm going to refer to John in just a second to give you all of the specifics, but regarding these types of requests, this is something that's available at the town office and any given day to go and ask them these questions. They'll get it for you. But in terms of this particular project, I'm going to stay by what I said at the last meeting, and that is, the FAA won't receive and process anything that isn't duly filled out, dotted, eyed, crossed, D's, et cetera. John, you want to give them the dates and everything after you finish? Whistle?
This is a, you know, one and a half page sign-off by Richard Doucette, who's the Environmental Program Manager for FAA New England Region. He approved this on January 31st, 1918, so this past January. And the final paragraph sums it all up. He did several things here, the proposed action that Rangelay did to extend the runway, the alternatives considered, public comment, assessment and mitigation, and finding of no significant impact. And the bottom line is, I have carefully and thoroughly considered the facts contained in the EA, Environmental Assessment. Based on that information, I find the proposed federal action is consistent with the existing national environmental policies and objectives of Section 101A of the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, NEPA, and other applicable environmental requirements. I also find the proposed federal action will not significantly affect the quality of the human environment or include any condition requiring consultation pursuant to Section 102, 2C of the NEPA. As a result, FAA will not prepare an environmental impact statement for this action. So the FAA is the one that approved the environmental assessment, not the selectmen, not the town. This is all put together for the engineer and the tests and all the things that they have to do, presented to the FAA, and it's their obligation to either accept the report as having no significant impact or to proceed further with a formal environmental impact statement. Well, if that's, I believe, what Mr. Boragad was asking.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
In regards?
That wasn't what I was asking. I was asking about your statement that the selectmen had ratified that, and I was wondering when that took place because I would have assumed that for the selectmen to ratify something, they would have discussed it. And even though I don't have perfect attendance at these meetings, I hit 75 or 80% of them, I wasn't aware of the selectmen ever discussing the, this environmental assessment. So that's what I wanted to follow up with because I had some unfinished business as far as the responses, though. I was trying to find out who answered the responses because I had a different opinion than what the answer was to one my wife and I. And I wasn't unable to carry that out. I was waiting for it to come up for discussion, and it never did. And so that's why I was questioning it. And, you know, at the March 6th meeting, I asked that chamber member, who answered it? And he told me Richard Doucette. So my, the person that signed that, so my wife followed up with an email, and he ended up sending back that he didn't answer those, that the town answered those and they're consulting. So there's... It was frustrating to not be able to follow through with this because I couldn't get people to tell me the truth of who I needed to talk to. And I have an audio recording of that March 6th meeting that clearly shows that he didn't answer my question correctly, you know, truthfully. And, you know, that bothers me, and that's why I'm sticking with this because I don't want to see my taxpayer money spent to someone who lied to me. He had a professional duty to tell the truth, and he didn't do it.
Thank you. In regards to your second request, the, the funding of playground equipment down at the town park, they again did some digging for you. We have all sorts of stuff to talk about in regards to that. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. It doesn't appear that there's more than $11,000 in equipment down there, not 50. And what we found was in November of 2015, in the minutes, information on playground equipment that can be temporarily set up, then incorporated into the final setup, was presented to the board. One swing set at 3,700 and a slide system at 11,000. They've started and made the systems can be usable for the summer, and that was, was made and seconded to purchase and set playground equipment temporarily, partially. This is before the major construction. So it sounds like they purchased a swing set.
They had to take the other one down.
The other one?
Yeah, the other one had to be removed because of safety, safety issues. So we had to put something on.
So then, in a year later, in November 14th of 2016, on a park public meeting, Phase Two playground, Alec Gally, engineer, Eric, rather, Eric presented playground options ranging from 85,000 to 62,000. The town has already spent 11,000 on equipment funded through the budget, not this project funding. There is flexibility in that we can always add new pieces down the road. After much discussion, the board agreed on a dollar amount in a meeting with the playground engineer along with Alec in the spring. Selectman Burgess motioned to spend up to 60,000 on playground equipment, and that was seconded and voted by for nothing. None of that funding a year later ever got into the budget to be funded out of the town budget. And it appears like that's what the intent was, to fund it out of the town budget.
Hang on, hold on, go ahead, Cindy.
It was, it was supposed to be worked into the park improvement project. I mean, the park is for children. I mean, that, we had this discussion during the time being that, you know, it was, it was supposed to be incorporated into that $900,000 that the voters approved for the park improvements.
Okay, so that's where the 60,000 vote was...
That was where it was supposed to come from.
And, and I do have a presentation by the engineer that has four different proposals for playground equipment, ranging, like he said, one was 85,000, one was 76,000, one was 62,000, and one was 63,000, depending upon what pieces of equipment. So if that was the case, and that would explain why there's no additional equipment because you had to lower the price of Phase Two, if I recall, it was over 700,000, and we only had 500 something left.
Okay.
That's my recollection of what I read.
Yeah, in the, um, yes, because that was the whole piece with, I mean, not only did voters want the bathhouse cost severely brought down, but we also needed, it was very important to keep the playground equipment because the park is for kids. And so is there, is there no money left in the...
Well, that, I can do a final analysis and see what might be left.
Yeah.
The intention is to buy the rest of the equipment or whatever you can out of the remainder of mine.
That's right.
There may be some left.
As soon as we find that, that number out, then we'll be able to assess how much more money we can borrow into equipment before we go to budget.
I'm not sure I get money, but we can, we can...
All right. Yes?
The point I was trying to make was before this project even got started, this rehab of the town park, I'm quite sure the voters approved $50,000 for playground equipment, either one year before this project got started or two years before because of, and...
My understanding is that $40,000 was spent in Aquasic? Was that part of it?
Aquasic was the year before. And the next year, the year after Aquasic, they had 50,000 for the Rangelay Town Park. And I'm just wondering what happened to the 50,000 because...
As you can see, they're looking into it.
Yeah.
Thank you for your request.
And that's comforting to know that what I was looking at wasn't $50,000 worth of playground equipment, it was only 11,000.
So this is three pieces down there. I went down at lunch just to refresh my memory, though. So there's a, there's a B down there that I guess you can sit on. I don't know if you get stung, but... And then there's, it looks like an upside-down top that you can spin on, and then there's six swings. So that's, that's what's down there.
Thank you, John. In the future, these requests are important. These requests are important. The process should go through them first, and then if you don't get the satisfaction you need relative to what's going on with the budget, what's going on with any of the departments, then you bring it to us. Okay? That's, that's the process by which it should be going. You all set now, Mark, regarding that? Okay, thank you. How about you, Joe? All set there?
Everything I got.
Good. Approve the minutes, October 9th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the October 19, 2008 regular meeting business with any corrections or additions.
Second.
Any corrections or additions, comments, criticisms? All in favor? Public to speak on non-agenda items. If you're on the agenda, let's not talk about it. You are? What do you get to say? Hearing none. I'm actually amazed. Could I just bask in this for a minute? Boards and committees, any updates?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mrs.... How are you, Williams?
Yeah, you were going to say go for it.
I was going to say go for it. Caught it just in time.
Um, the Rangelay Regional Economic Opportunity Committee has been meeting now for the last month and a half. We did take the majority of the summer off, other than working on some downtown meetings that were happening throughout the summer and helping expedite and move that process along. So we wanted to give you a quick update on some of the things we've been working on. The first is the downtown plan should be here any day. We're still working on that, but we were in the process of that. But some of our committee is also on the Rangelay Connects project that's been going on. Very interesting meetings, a lot of great information, a lot of great volunteer enthusiasm coming out of that Rangelay Connects group, which is working out with nonprofits, the Rangelay Health and Wellness Pavilion and the Rangelay Leaders Trust. We've been spearheading that process. And those meetings have had some really good information that supports a lot of what we've heard in the downtown process that we went through with the downtown plan. So Linda Dexter on our committee sits on both committees, and then I've also been attending, I think Laura has as well, those meetings with Rangelay Connects. So I think there's a lot of positive momentum in Rangelay right now, and it's exciting. So hopefully, we can move that along. We've also been working with, a little bit with the internet piece. We've, right now, where Consolidated is, because they're doing what they've been doing, which is upgrading as AC fit. There's no more CAF II funded projects in our area, so that's it for Consolidated, other than what Consolidated wants to do to improve what their infrastructure is. We also have a new internet company in town that does a wireless technology, and we've been working with Dave and hoping that Dave continues to move forward and expand his internet company, which is a wireless solution, and it's very good. We've been working with the county, Franklin County, which has already did our study, our original study. The next phase is implementation. We actually have Brian here, who has been working with Charlie from Greater Franklin County, working with multiple solutions. And they're looking at a county-wide solution, and they're looking at solutions that are going to meet our objectives, not today, but five years from today. So some of those companies that have been going to them, there's multiple companies. Matrix is one of them, who we're going to hear from a little bit later. They're going to do a presentation, is to have fiber to the home for the ultimate solution of high-speed internet to the home. I believe there's other wireless solutions as well, but that's the ultimate goal, is to make sure that whatever anybody does, it's not obsolete in one year. So it's going to work with us and get us to the future, and we're very excited about that. So in their conversations, the way these companies are going to approach it, because they can never build an ROI on their own because we don't have enough population, none of Franklin County has enough population, is to work with either the grant process to help supplement their income or do public-private partnerships, which they talked to us in that study and told us what we were going to have to implement. And Matrix will talk about what they, how they want to approach it. The county is also working with CMP as part of this corridor infrastructure piece that's kind of all over the news, as to waiving the telephone pole line fees to companies like a Matrix or others so that they could implement at a lesser cost because those fees are very expensive. So the county is continuing on, and Brian, do I...
I think you hit all the highlights.
I hit the highlights, okay. So it's, that's exciting, and we just hope you keep an open mind and listen to the solutions. And what we, the ultimate goal is that Rangelay, you know, not only gets up to speed, but gets up to speed and gets to a point, especially if we're going to ask anybody to implement dollar amounts, to help supplement anything, that we're not going for a solution that's not a long-term solution. And Laura? Okay.
Does the public have any questions for Kate or that group?
I have a question. Now, you mentioned you were working with Charlie Woodward?
Yes.
I've never met him, but he sent the letter to the selectmen asking for voter support. Apparently, the county commissioners talking like they might not fund the development council? So I was wondering, since you mentioned him, if you would give the selectmen some of your insight?
I, we would give our highest support for that. We've asked repeatedly, year after year, and the select board has heard me ask for economic developer for the Town of Rangelay, which we feel is incredibly important. We have not... which we feel is incredibly important. We have not received specific money for an economic developer. We do use a consultant here locally. Charlie is the economic developer for Franklin County. We utilize that resource a lot. There's no way I'm meeting with, Little Rangelie isn't gonna be meeting with all these groups and trying to push the agendas and help us here locally. So that, they work on a very limited budget, and I would highly, highly recommend that you would support Greater Franklin County.
Anything else, Sean?
No, I just, when I heard that, I thought I should say something.
Dave, anyone want to add? Donnie? Anybody who run this into the table?
Sir?
Did you say yes?
No, I said all set.
Oh, okay. I thought that meant no. I was kidding. I have a couple of questions. How are you able to assure that the technology that you're pursuing is the five-year plan? Because everything I read technologies, you bought it today, it's obsolete tomorrow.
Um, we're gonna, we, we have a consultant, Brian, who lives and breathes technology that Charlie has, is hired to help us make sure that whatever we're looking at is set up to go to the future.
Right.
Yep.
Just a public comment, so that you know what they're up against. We have documentation in our packet today that reflects funding throughout certain parts of the state of Maine, and although we may be third in county taxes here in Northern Franklin County, Franklin County rests somewhere around fifth in the greater area in terms of funding for these particular economic projects. The Scataquas County is almost triple what you, if my memory serves on the numbers, so it's gonna take a concerted effort from taxpayers in towns like Rangelie to get this number higher, so we can see some actual funding that makes some sense for the future. Thank you, Kate. Anybody else in committees? Thank you. Consent items, dispersment warrants, AP warrant, FY19, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the AP warrant number 15 in the amount of
Second. Any questions? All in favor? No, close. Liquor license, Hungry Trout.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal application for Hungry Trout Bar and Grill and Bar. And we get that?
Second.
Move the second. Just one question. I did read it all. I wanted to make sure. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor? Rangelie Hospitality, Inc., doing business as Rangelie Inn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal application for Rangelie Hospitality, Inc., doing business as the Rangelie Inn and Tavern. Second.
Any questions? All paperwork is finished. Nicely done. Do want to point out, though, that it is not required, for those of you who care, it is not required for this purpose here in the town. Fill out the dollar amounts that you earn in rooms, food, and liquor. It is required for state application. If you choose to keep that information yourself, which I do, you can't. No discussion? All in favor? Help me with the name.
Hella Arcadia.
That's the one right there, Forty-Fifth Parallel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal application for Hella Arcadia LLC, doing business as the Forty-Fifth Parallel with Fire Grill.
Any discussion? We have the owner here. It's time to ask him how he makes those good fried clams. Okay, all in favor? I know you might want to bolt out here, but it's gonna be an interesting meeting. You might want to hang out.
I'm thinking.
There you go. Thank you. Downtown Revitalization Reserve, pardon me, Wright Pierce Invoice for $3,266.58.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Wright Pierce Invoice dated 10/15/2018 in the amount of $3,266.58.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I gotta read this. You know, once in a while, you get a great little letter from somebody, and this is one of them. "It made my day when I reviewed all this thing. Exquisitely done," and I'm sure she didn't have her mother's help. "Dear Mr. Madigan, on behalf of the student council, I would like to thank you and your staff for your help with the homecoming parade. A big thank you to Tracy Pitt for her help. Thank you to Fire Chief Bacon and his staff for help with traffic control, as well as Chief French, Sergeant Austin, Lisa, and Nathan of North Star Ambulance for escorting everyone in the parade. With thanks, Cindy Egan's daughter, Brooke Egan, Student Council President." You may not think this is a big deal, but I was brought up to send thank you notes, and over the years, I've had an opportunity to try to help students here and there, and you don't see this very often anymore. So, thank you, daughter. I really do appreciate it. Personally, and I'm sure the town does as well.
Well, it was, it was, it was very, it was very stressful for her because, because of the timing of the elections and then the student council meetings, it left very little time to ask permission for the parade. So seeing everything all set was, just made her day. So, a great crew.
I think it's wonderful, and again, please extend our appreciation. Next, old business, downtown revitalization plan update. We did that.
Yeah, we did.
Next is DuBois King, Sergeant Corporation, pre-construction meeting minutes. Did you all have an opportunity to review?
Thank you for including them.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
They went through the whole contract and, you know, all the issues, so everybody knows through the contract if they have questions.
Can I just, can we start getting the minutes from all board, all meetings, whoever, committees, boards and stuff? Because this was really helpful.
It is very helpful, and you've made this request, and I know that John has heard it, and Tracy's heard it. So if there was one specific ones right now, we're gonna tackle them individually, so we can get them if we're not getting them. Okay? I know it's been said that they're, are they still online, available online?
Donnie doesn't have internet, though, at his house.
I have too much phone to talk about it.
I'll be honest with you. I agree with Donnie. If it's in this packet, it is red. If your expectation is for me to take more time out of my day and search online, ain't gonna get done. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I mean, maybe before they're uploaded into the system, just throw them in John's tray for the packets.
Whatever you guys can do to make it work.
Next, authorization for town manager. Did I miss something? Authorization for the town manager to sign if-for contract with Sergeant Core.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the contract between the town of Rangelie and Sergeant Corporation.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, first time all night long you do this. Are you trying to make me look bad?
No.
Go for it.
I've been doing it all to that one time. Has our attorney looked at the contract?
Oh, that's right.
No. Not this.
Did you review it, John?
Yes.
How do you feel?
Fine. Covers everything, and it refers to all the bid documents, so I'm perfectly fine with it. But the reason I brought it up, it's another one of those policy issues, the town purchasing policy, and it says the town manager has authority for anything, it has categories up to $1,000, $1,005, $5 to $10, and $10,000 or greater. All it says in most cases, acquisitions of goods and services with a value of more than $10,000 will be through the formal bid process, which this was. We had a formal process. We had three bids received on, they were open April 25th, three known contractors, and Sergeant was below bid of $10 million. The problem I had, I kind of expressed it for Cindy on Friday, was just the last section says, "The town of Rangelie has caused this contract to be signed and sealed in their corporate names by its interim town manager, respectively, being duly authorized." Well, I looked at that, and I thought, I don't recall anybody duly authorizing me to sign a $10 million contract. And this is very weak in the personnel policy. They're really, all this says is anything over $10,000. I guess my question is, do you consider this being duly authorized, because you signed the policy? To me, this is too big. We need to really look at that.
Yeah, but you're doing what you're requesting us to change in the policies bringing it to us.
This is another policy.
Correct, I agree.
We want you to look at that, too, because something like this is too big for the town manager to have to sign. So that, that's why I'm bringing it to you, to, you know, you're elected, give me the authority, I'll sign this. They already started today, because that's the date they intended, stated today. So they started moving some dirt to build the road. Their plan is to do the road right away, so that, you know, the realignment, so they can start during the winter, put and fill in on the extension of the road.
Do you feel it needs to go to lawyers review?
Well, I, I feel more comfortable that we have someone with your experience to tell you the honest truth.
And what I've seen from FAA.
Because we've got the attorney a lot, because we've had them review.
This was written by a lawyer, I guarantee it.
All of the documents from FAA have actually said in them that we have no authority to change any of that. This is a standard, in my mind, a standard contract we use for our business, so I'm not concerned in the least.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Took it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. On the new business, Matrix Design Group presentation. Welcome to Rangelie.
Thank you very much for the time to present this information. My name is Chris Lynch. I'm with Matrix Design Group. We're out of East Hanover, New Jersey. Personally, I'm out of Worcester, Massachusetts.
Worcester.
My daughter lives in Lewiston, so it's not a burden for me at all to come visit. I put together a packet here, just so, in case I'm standing in your way, you're able to see it. And I also gave a digital copy of this to Tracy, so as far as I'm considered, as far as I'm concerned, it's a public document, so if anybody wanted to get a copy, if you wanted to get a copy with Tracy, or I'll leave my business cards up here. If somebody wants a copy of the presentation, I'm happy to send it to them as well. The Matrix Design Group has been in business for over 22 years.
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Sure.
If you do want a copy, put your name on your sign-in sheet right next to it, requesting. We'll see to it that he gets that request. Barry O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were founded over 22 years ago. We're a privately-held company, and the company was founded specifically to design, engineer, and build fiber networks. That's all we do as fiber networks. We have a sister company, Millennium Communications. Matrix Design Group does the engineering, and Millennium Communications does the construction and the electronics, so we could basically do any fiber project from design to build and everything in between. Or, as we like to say, any fiber project from concept to completion. We've done thousands of miles of fiber network, and we've done close to 5,000 fiber projects over the years. So we're very well-versed in this network. Some of the customers that we've done business with, some of the ones I'd like to point out is Bell Labs. We actually built one of the very first broadband networks in the country. Bell Labs was working with Microsoft on a project they called At Home, and in order for the scientists at Bell Labs to use this, we had to connect their house to the campus. So in effect, created one of the first broadband networks in the country. We also did the complete campus for Rutgers University. Recently, we did a couple of multimillion-dollar smart grids for public service in New Jersey, who is to New Jersey what CMP is to Maine. We've also built a network operations center for Homeland Security, as well as tons and tons of other projects. Right now, probably our three biggest billing customers are Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Level Three, which is now part of CenturyLink. Those also happen to be the three largest internet providers in the, in the country, and they choose to do business with us. They can do business wherever they want to, they pick us. We're not really well-known outside of the industry, so if you haven't heard of us, I don't blame you. But inside the industry, we have a reputation for quality of work. In addition to all the other things that we've done, we've also designed and built 10 rural New England towns, fiber-to-the-home networks for 10 rural New England towns. Nine in Vermont is part of the EC Fiber Network. EC stands for East Central Vermont, up near, just up past White River Junction. We also built the town of Leverett, Mass, and we're in the process of building four more towns for Burlington Telecom. They're doing that expansion. And we're also building the town of Petersham, Mass, in a public-private partnership, which is the model for what we're presenting to you today. This, you know, we've been doing this for years and years. We believe that you should invest in what you know, so instead of buying another yacht or investing in a mutual fund or whatever, the owners of the company want to reinvest their money into what they know, which is fiber networks. Our technology partners, we believe in using the best and breed. Three main ones for fiber really are Calix, and we have Peter Johnson from Calix here tonight. Calix is by far the number-one fiber-axis product in North America, not even close. We also do Cisco as far as our network electronics are concerned. We have two CCIEs, including our CIO. The CCIE is the highest level of Cisco certification that exists in the world. We have two of them on staff. There's only about 5,000 of them in existence. In addition to that, we have six other Cisco-certified engineers. For the glass, we actually use corning. We standardize on corning. Can't guarantee that we're gonna continue to use exclusively corning because of availability issues that they've been running into, but we try to use corning whenever we can. So what we'd be offering for the town of Rangelie is, we basically design, build, operate, and maintain a fiber-to-the-home network of every home in Rangelie at our expense. The town will be responsible for providing the right of way, and what that really means is providing the money for the make-ready on the utility poles. Now, if CMP is gonna, you know, do something to make this a lot less expensive, that's great. That means the amount of money that the town would have to expend would be that much less. Then you'd also have Consolidated. Normally, the poles are joint-owned by the electric company and the telephone company, so you'd have to work with both CMP and Consolidated to get the rights to go into the poles. By you providing us the right of way, you're also letting us know, okay, here's, here's where the houses are in the town, here's where we're willing to build the network to, and it kind of takes that burden off of us. Because if we don't get service to somebody, it's because, well, we weren't given the right of way. The other thing that we'd be asking from the town is a place to house and power the network electronics. We don't need a lot of room. It's about the size of like three large filing cabinets, and room enough for a technician to walk around those filing cabinets. We usually ask for just a couple things. One, it has to be above the flood plain, which I don't think would be a problem there. Secondly, it has to have clean power, and the third thing is just has to be secure. So we have to be able to lock it up and make sure that nobody can get into it. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. Then we did the budgetary numbers. We used a pretty high number. In the town of Petersham, they're actually putting that place in the town hall basement. They built out a room specifically for this purpose, and they're providing a generator specifically to make sure that the power never goes out on the, on the fiber network. The total cost of the town was $32,000 for that, so it's, it can be fairly inexpensive to do. When we built the town of Leverett, they wanted to be a city in the hill, and they really are. They have a beautiful network. But they built the two telecom shelters in the town from scratch at a cost of $115,000 a piece, which to us was kind of overkill, but, you know, no was the nominee. Other than that, the police details during make-ready, Matrix would pay for the police details that are needed during construction, but the police details are normally considered part of the make-ready process, and the utility companies normally roll that cost into their make-ready estimates. But you'll see that in a little bit. The total cost for the project, we estimate to be just less than $5,000. The total cost for the project, we estimate to be just less than $5 million. We'd be investing about $3.5 million. The 1.4 that we'd be asking from the town, none of that money would actually be going to Matrix. It would be going to the utility companies or for the rooms for the Nelson Power and Network Electronics. So none of the money actually comes to us. That estimate is actually high. But we feel very strongly about making sure that we give you a number, and all of a sudden we don't come back in six months and say, "Oh yeah, that number's now doubled." It's much better for us to come back and say, "Oh yeah, we gave you that number, and it's half." So that's our feeling on that. So we want to make sure we say that upfront, so we don't scare people as far as with the estimates. I should also mention that the reason I'm here in the first place is because of the plan that Charlie at the Greater Franklin Development Council put together, the broadband initiative plan, that was put together by Brian. Without that information, we wouldn't have known that Rangelie was an unserved community.
That answers my first question.
So, I'm not sure if you've actually seen the report, but it's very extensive. As far as Franklin County, these are the pages that are just specifically for Rangelie, Rangelie Plantation, Dallas Plantation, and Sandy River Plantation. And if we build in Rangelie, we're happy to do those plantations as well, as part of the build, overall build. So it would be a regional build for economic development. So just wanted to mention that as well. So thank you, Brian, for doing all the hard work.
Can we ask questions while you're going along?
Absolutely.
You refer to the end.
No. Let me apologize too, because I'm fighting a little bit of a head cold, so, but go ahead.
When you just mentioned Dallas, Sandy River, and Rangelie Plantation, as well as Rangelie, you're only asking us for money, correct?
No, every town would have the exact same plan. They would have to pay for, provide us the make-ready. The only thing that might be different is, like, if we're going into Rangelie Plantation or Dallas Plantation, we might be able to feed them out of the room that was provided here, and not have them have to provide their own place to house and power network electronics. But that's an engineering question that would happen down the road. We cannot build in any one of those places without Rangelie being built first, because we'd be built here and go up from here. Now, we might not be able to do Sandy River Plantation, although I did meet with Kate and Laura, and I assumed I would have to go through Dallas to get to Sandy River. But if that's not the case, then, you know, they can be independent, in any case.
So 1.4 to Rangelie's portion. There's an additional money for the plantations. If they chose to build out a fiber network in the plantations, they would have to pay them their own estimated dollar amount for right-of-way.
Thank you.
Sorry, buddy, that's funny. Part of our business plan is, we require to have at least six subscribers per mile of build. So in Rangelie, there'd be 83.4 miles of build, and that works out to roughly 500 subscribers. Or, if you look at it another way, that's 39% of the homes in Rangelie. When we built in the town of Leverett, their take rate was 85% of the homes took service. And right now, in the town of Petersham, it's at 70%. So we feel very comfortable at 39%. It wouldn't be a problem. When we built in the towns in EC Fiber, they're up in snow country. You know, they're, people go skiing in that area all the time. So there's a lot of second homes. The people who get second homes, a lot of times, are our best customers, because you'd think, well, they want to turn off the service while they're not there. Fact of the matter is, they want the service on, so they can keep a look at their property. How much snow did we get? You know, what's the weather like this weekend? You know, those types of things. And if they do rent out their houses, having internet service, reliable internet service is like the first must-have that most people are asking for today. For the subscribers, we would be asking for an installment fee of $400 if they're just getting internet. That installment, installation fee would be broken into two payments. The first payment would be $200, and then just before getting service, there'd be another fee of $200, which we'd be willing to break up over 12 months, to make it easier for people. The key for us is getting as many subscribers as possible, because that way we make back our investment on the network. If the customer is interested in getting both internet and a voice-over IP telephone line, the installation fee would be $500. And the difference is, the voice-over IP would be also installing the battery backup unit. So if the power ever went out, the telephone line would be live for at least eight hours, depending upon usage. With just internet, like, if you have your DSL today, or use that, whatever you're using, they don't have a battery backup unit today. You provide a UPS, or you provide some other type of line conditioner, which would be the same thing that you'd be able to do for the internet service network provider. If somebody asks for a service after the network is built, there'd be a charge of $1,500. And the reason for the discrepancy in the fees, it's just that expensive to roll a truck to do an installation for one customer. If we're building up down a street, or a section in a neighborhood, the crews are there anyways. You know, so they're able to, you know, do three, four in a day, versus, you know, rolling a truck, a crew, and do one house. It's expensive. In the town of Leverett, because it's a municipally-owned network, they are nonprofit, so they have to charge whatever the cost is. The cost for a new subscriber is $2,440, because that's what cost them to connect somebody there. And we feel that the installation fee is actually very reasonable, especially considering, you know, what they're getting in exchange, and the value of the property is going to rise by way more than $400 once the network is in.
After the installation, what are your monthly rates?
Glad you asked! The, as you can see right here, it would be $95 per month for 50 megabits symmetrical, so that'd be 50 megabits down, and 50 megabits up. The FCC has just changed their definition of broadband to 25 megabits down and 3 megabits up. So we're symmetrical. So if you're uploading anything to the internet, pictures, movies, YouTube, whatever, you're going to be using a long bandwidth. Here, we make sure that you have that bandwidth available. We'd also offer 100 megabits at $135 per month. We feel very strongly that you should try out 50 megabits first. You know, it's always easier for you to upgrade. All you have to do is call us, and we'll look very easily at that. The download speed is capped at 50 megabits or 100 megabits, depending upon your package. But the upload speed is dependent upon how busy the network is. Now, if, because the Calix equipment that we use is very intelligent, it uses dynamic bandwidth allocation. So if it sees that you have a really big file that you're trying to upload, and it knows that there's available bandwidth on the network, it'll get it done faster. You know, so you'll burst above 50 megabits or 100 megabits to get that file off the network. So it frees up the network for, you know, the next user that comes along. You can also add a voice-over IP telephone line for $20. You have the choice of two pieces of equipment in your house. You have the 803, which is basically just straightforward. There's an Ethernet connection, there's also a voice connection. This one doesn't have it, but there's a voice connection. And that's it. You're providing your own router, you're providing your own in-house wiring. This is our point of demarcation. You also have the option for this 844 unit, called a Gigasender. This has both the optical network terminal equipment built into it, and also an 802.11 AC Wi-Fi router. 802.11 AC is the latest and greatest technology as far as Wi-Fi is concerned. This is rated for a house for about 4,000 square feet. If that's not enough, you can have mesh extenders. So say if there's an area, you know, like a woodshop or a garage that you're trying to get to, you can actually use a mesh extender to get to that area and extend the signal. So this would be an extra $5 per month, though. Because it is active electronics, there are seat licenses that we have to buy from the manufacturer, and that's basically a pass-through from us. We're just passing on the pass. Something ever happens to this, it's our responsibility to replace it at our cost. And also, the service that we get from Calix is beyond comparison. I really mean that. There's been examples of people calling up and saying, "Hey, I just did a speed test. You know, I'm supposed to be getting X, you know, megabits per second, and I'm not getting close to that." And they would be able to look up and say, "Well, we're looking at your network now, and it seems you've got your device, and then you have two other devices that seem to be streaming Netflix movies, and they're doing it at 15 megabits apiece." Because what do you mean? Because that's what we're showing. We're showing three devices active on the network. "Oh, okay, one second." Guy goes up, goes, "My kids were supposed to be in bed." So they could tell exactly what the problem is. But anyways.
So how do you accommodate businesses?
Right now, we have just the residential plan. We probably will come up with a business plan as far as a business rate, because businesses are more reliant upon the service than a person at home. So we need to give them an extra level of service agreement. So if there's a busy network, we need to make sure that the business customers get the signals first.
So in terms of this conversation, it's strictly residential?
Residential, and right now, we'd offer the same pricing to a business. You know, so say like the Rangelie end, they would probably need more than 100 megabits, because if, you know, they want to make sure that everybody's happy with the signal. We would come up with a custom plan for them. In general, where we do have a lot of business, it goes, for 50 megabits for a business, it was up to $135, and then for 100 megabits, it goes to $150.
The other thing that's important about the offer is, because it's symmetrical, that's typically what all small, medium-sized businesses require in their service-level agreements. You're kind of already offering a business-type service to the residents, and that equipment can easily do a gig and be on that. So if they, if they do a negotiation with the Matrix and want to do more than 100 meg, the equipment can more than support it.
You had a question, Kate?
I was just kind of going to reiterate that, because I have Consolidated. I'm not sure what you have, but the business requirement is for the upload speed normally more. Now, in my particular business, I don't need the upload speed, because I'm not uploading a lot of data, videos and data. I could, but I don't. So it really is a residential offering. It's a normal set, like what I get, a 7-in-1, right? So it's nothing, now, when the businesses, like across the street at the trust, where they need to upload a lot of data, they get a business package, which currently is 5.5 or 10.5 or something. It's not these numbers. So when you're talking symmetrical, that upload speed is what's really important. The service-level agreement, I don't believe is any different between the business model of Consolidated and residential. And I say I don't believe that, because when I call Consolidated, I get the same response time I do, whether I'm at my house or I'm at my job, you know? Whichever the network down, it's three days later.
So that brings up a question. What about maintenance and upgrades and windstorms? Who should it be here, how many days later, before you're going to have something here on?
There's a couple of criteria that we have, as far as being able to offer this to different towns. First criteria is, it has to be unserved. We're not looking to compete against cable companies, because the cable companies will ignore you until there's competition. And as soon as there's competition, they'll upgrade their speeds, they'll lower their prices, until that competition goes away. So we're not trying to compete against cable companies. Secondly, it has to have a certain number of homes per mile. And normally, it's about 11 and a half homes per mile, because we need six subscribers per mile. And I should have differentiated between a subscriber and a home, because a lot of towns, you'll have a house that has two subscribers. There's a downstairs and an upstairs, or a home business and a residential service. So we need six. And then the third thing is, we need to be passing at least 500 homes, because that's what it takes to maintain a local technician. So the technician that would handle this, you know, might be more than one, but to...
He's not going to live in Burlington?
No, he would live here. And as far as like the, you know, a car hits a pole, the first thing you have to understand is there's criteria for the pole. The first company that can touch that pole and fix their equipment is the electric company, because there's hazard involved. The second company is the telephone company, because they co-own the pole. So they get second dibs. So even if we're the first person on the scene, we have to wait till the other companies have done their work before we can do ours. So we would have a local person to handle that stuff. If it came down to an ice storm or a really big storm, a lot of the subcontractors that do that type of work are already subcontracting to CMP or to Consolidated, right? So what we have is an advantage, is we'd be able to roll crews from New Jersey, because an ice storm that hits here, probably would have nothing to do with weather in New Jersey. And we have roughly 100 employees, and we've got 50 bucket trucks. So we'd be able to roll the crews up and get that work done. So again, it depends upon the nature of the problem. But all the maintenance would be our responsibility and at our cost. And we need 500 subscribers to start, and that's really our break-even point. So we want to make sure that we have more than that. And for us to keep those customers, we have to keep them happy, right? If we're providing bad service, we're not keeping them happy, and if another alternative comes along, we don't want to lose them today. So it's in our best interest. And the only thing I should stress here, and you probably noticed it from the presentation, is we're an engineering company. We're not a marketing company, you know? So that's why we say 50 megabits and say, saying, "We're providing you a gigabit service," because we're providing what we feel is going to be given to the customer. So when they do a speed test, that's what they're going to get, right? And when you do the math here, say $95, you know, just for basic internet, there would also be either a $5 fee for the built-in Wi-Fi, and then you don't have to worry about any electronics. There's also a municipal fee. This is how the town would pay for it, right? The town would be looking at grants and other ways, you know, to try to reduce the amount of money that the subscribers would be paying, because the less money that the subscriber pays, the more willing they'll be to sign up for service, to stay with the service. So it's in our best interest to make sure that that cost is as low as possible. But also, we have to be recognizing the fact that not every town is going to have $1.4 million just hanging around, waiting to spend it on internet. So there's a couple of different things we can do there. But we'll get to that in a minute.
I have a question regarding, I don't think you, at least from my perspective, in terms of maintenance, and you mentioned CMP and the phone company having to come. Just less than a week ago, we had a bad windstorm. A number of places were out. At one point in the morning, I counted 25 bucket trucks going to this entire region, and hopefully getting the power on to all of these customers who lost power. How far down the food chain will we be for you all to show up? Because they're responding, power companies responding quickly, that during the event, and then right up through to the point they get everybody on. If you're going to have one guy working up here for all, but how's it going to get it all done?
Well, like I said, one is the starting point for us. So we might have more than one, because of the number of subscribers we'd be looking at, especially if we do a couple additional plantations. We're also talking with a couple other towns. So if we're building in them, we're going to have a much bigger presence. But a lot of the subcontractors that, a lot of those trucks that you saw, might not have been CMP trucks, they might have been White Mountain trucks or somebody else. We'd probably be using the same subcontractors as well. We would be, we would have the same type of response that the other utilities have. And the thing I should mention too, as far as the fiber's concerned, fiber's going to be the most robust thing that's on that pole. There's been so many cases where, like, everything else breaks, except for the fiber, right? So it might be a case of having to reattach it. You know, and a lot of times, the power will go out, the telephone service will go out, your broadband will still be up and going, because the fiber never broke, right? But it would be the same response time that you'd be looking at any other utilities.
So could you address how many in Maine and New Hampshire you're working on? Because right now, the closest is Vermont and Massachusetts.
Yeah, well, we're talking with you, we're talking with New Sharon, we're talking with WELD, we're talking with a number of communities, and that's just the ones that are in Franklin County. So we're really committed to this.
Let me address on the electronics side. So we work with Lincoln Villtel, we work with Oxford, which is now First Nations Fiber. We work with many internet providers in Maine, and most recently, we did municipal work for Alsborough. And we're working, possibly are working with Safford, we're giving it verbal. So we have a presence in Maine as well, in terms of troubleshooting electronics-based. I know you're talking more about the planned infrastructure with storms and whatnot, but typically, 60% of those troubleshooting calls are going to be because someone's Wi-Fi's not working, not because it's a network outage, so to speak. And really, what you're paying for that $5 a month is really not the hardware. You're paying for software tools that they can use, where they can look in and see how many devices in that home are using the Wi-Fi, and what are they? For instance, a seven-year-old computer may have a Wi-Fi client that's never going to be doing more than 10 megabits, and you educate that person on that. Whereas they may have a brand-new phone that can do that 100 meg all day long. So a lot of it's software that they're using, and that's part of why they're charging the fiber. We see more of the troubleshooting calls coming in to be of that nature. I understand, because of the geography... I understand because of the geography here that your first concern is the plan, but as he said, a lot of these phone companies, as soon as they can, they migrate to DSL technologies to fiber because their troubles go down, and that's in terms of the answer's wanted.
Thank you.
So, your thirty percent users are also gonna be competing with consolidated and K's company? You're gonna be competing with thirty percent, you gotta compete.
Yeah, if you're thirty-nine percent, just in Rangelie, but we don't mind competing, because...
It just seems like that's your average homeowner, or I don't know what anybody else is...
I'll get to that in a second, but if you talk to any consultant and they say it's greenfield, where there's really no broadband, and like I said, the FCC says twenty-five down and three up, that's broadband. The number-one technology for a greenfield to use is fiber-the-home. If you can do fiber-the-home, that's what they all recommend, unless they work for the cable company. Then that's would be, you know, DSL or wireless, whether it's fixed wireless or some other flavor. So, we feel comfortable that people, once they have the opportunity to have fiber-the-home, they will never go back.
Well, don't consolidate is installing some fiber here, correct?
Consolidated has mostly network fiber, so it's basically serving, you know, their DSL huts. It's not really fiber-the-home, it's just fiber there.
And I'm very knowledgeable about this subject, right?
They're building climate that you can't take advantage of, but they can take advantage of it.
Well, and I should tell you that there's really two components here. So, you have what's going to your house, you'd have a hut here, and you'd have fiber running down the street, and that fiber will go to everybody's house. But this hut would also be connected to the internet, right? And it's that internet connection that everybody on the network is sharing. Chances are, that internet connection to the greater world will be through consolidated. So, it would be a customer of consolidated and also competition for consolidated. And again, we don't mind competing against DSL or wireless. It's the cable companies that we're not gonna compete against, so, sorry, Dave.
So, Dave, your, what's the typical cost of yours, if I may ask?
First, for the customer?
Right.
Fifty-nine to nine-nine.
Your high end is there, or low end?
But for wireless, what speeds are you offering?
Fifteen, twenty-five, and fifty for residential.
So, say there is a developer with a subdivision, you know, lots for sale, and they want to make this ready for your product. That does not count as a subscriber, if they're just correct, they're just going to...
Yeah, but they do fit into our engineering. When we build the fiber, we want to make sure that there's enough fiber for all the houses in town. And we also talk with the assessor's office and say, okay, what's, you know, what's the plot size? How much frontage? We want to make sure that there's enough future fiber for any possible consideration, so you don't have to worry about, you know, future growth. And why fifty megabits or a hundred megabits versus like calling it a gigabit? I have to throw this in there, because a lot of times, people will say, "We're offering a gigabit service," but it's really that connection to the wider world that you're talking about. Our rule of thumb is one gigabit of backhaul for every five hundred houses passed. So, here, we'll be looking at three gigabits and potentially more, because once you get to like three, like four megabits, sometimes a ten-gigabit connection is actually the same price. So, why not get ten gigabits when you're getting them for the same price as four gigabits? It's also important to recognize that we utilize dynamic bandwidth allocation, so that, you know, like those bursts happen. That amount of bandwidth connection to the internet is always there. So, why not, you know, take full advantage of it, you're always paying for it. I should also mention that we don't have any data caps. So, if you're getting fifty megabits and you want to watch Netflix all day, knock yourself out. You're not gonna have, you know, get slowed down ten days into your service per month. It also should be mentioned that right now, the technology for video, and video accounts for about seventy percent of the traffic on the internet today. The standard for video traffic is changing from standard definition and high definition to four K and eight K. Four K takes about twenty-five megabits to encode, so it's about twice as bandwidth-intensive. So, what you're doing today is not gonna be enough for what you're gonna need tomorrow for the standards that are coming down the road. And also, there's other things, you know, like phone applications that are bandwidth-intensive, video chatting and stuff like that. You also have gaming, you know, so if you have kids at home, once they get a broadband connection, they're gonna get into gaming, and that's gonna use up a lot of bandwidth, especially now with like the virtual reality and everything else that's coming down the pipe. If you look at the subscriber monthly costs, so if you get a DSL line or a telephone line, it's about eighty-five dollars combined, right? So, that's, I'm guessing that's what consolidates average cost is gonna be. And it's funny, because everybody's different depending upon when they signed up for DSL. Was it Verizon, was it FairPoint, you know, what was the deal that they got? So, eighty-five dollars is about average. As dish or web TV, the cost for the package is normally about a hundred and forty dollars. So, you're looking at about two hundred and twenty-five dollars total for your internet, your telephone, and your TV. With high-speed internet and a voice-over IP line, you'd be looking at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we don't do video, but because you're getting a broadband connection, you're free to choose whatever you want. So, you can get Netflix, you can get Amazon Prime. You know, I'm guessing there's a lot of people today in Rangelie that have Amazon Prime for their deliveries, but they're not able to take advantage of the video service because they don't have the internet connection. You can also get packages, like PlayStation Vue offers ninety-three channels for forty-five dollars. And what I like about this package is it also includes Nestle. So, if you're a Bruins fan or a Red Sox fan, you get this and you're good, you know? When you combine it all, that's a total of...
It's very important, by the way, I just want to point out.
The total will be a hundred and seventy dollars. So, in comparison, you'd be saving over six hundred dollars per year for the average user. Now, each user is gonna be different. You know, they might not have the need for the forty-five-dollar package. Sling has a package of twenty channels for twenty dollars. Or they might just be happy with Hulu, which is, I think, like ten dollars per month. But it goes to show you that when you look at what the total expenses are for people paying for their entertainment and their other services today, this will be very, very important. And also, just to reiterate the point as far as the data consumption, traditionally, the amount of data that you use is like your income. It rises to meet, you know, your expenses rise to meet your income. Your data usage is gonna rise to meet whatever bandwidth that you have available, especially with four K and those other things that we talked about. And that's the way it's always been historically. And this slide was courtesy of Calix. Yeah, yeah. Or, the other thing that people talk about too is, you know, well, what about the elderly? You know, they don't need for this stuff. They've got grandkids, they're gonna wanna have this, because when the grandkids come to visit them on Thanksgiving, they don't want the kids to be saying, "Oh, Mom, let's go, I can't get a signal," you know? If they're happy getting whatever bandwidth they can get, then let's go to Grandma's house, right? Or telemedicine is gonna be big, right? If they are being forced to leave their home because they need medical care, which could be provided via telemedicine, this becomes a must-have for them, so... As far as voice-over IP is concerned, we ask for a two-year commitment when people sign up for service. That's just for the internet. If you want to get voice-over IP and try it and you don't like it, that's fine, you know? We're not building in voice-over IP big into our business plan, because we think at some point, it's gonna go away. Because the fact of the matter is, everybody has one of these today, right? And this becomes your landline. As long as you get a good enough signal, most people get rid of their telephone line.
It's probably in Rangelie.
Yeah, the difference.
Yeah.
It's a huge problem, usually.
Well, so that's important. If you have a smartphone that's Wi-Fi enabled, and you're getting a signal throughout your house, you basically have de facto the landline at that point, you know? And because it's coming off the broadband and not your cell carrier, you're actually using less data on your data plan as well.
They use a voice app.
Yeah. And then, well, other apps like Skype or something like that, Skype is basically free. So, you know, it's tough to compete, and it's free. So, whatever people want to do as far as their voice-over IP or for their telephone line, we're happy with, we'll help support it. As far as the broadband municipal fees, there's really two fees, right? You've got your CapEx, the cost to provide the right-of-way, that's the make-ready cost. Then you have your operating expenses. The operating expenses really come down to the yearly pole rental fees, right? And that's fairly small, and that fee would probably work out to be about five dollars per subscriber that we build into the bill, and, you know, people would pay it at the end of the year, we, you know, or quarterly, whatever. We'd provide a check to the Rangelie Treasurer, and once a year, they'd write it, one check to CMP, one check to consolidated for their rentals. And that's pretty much the extent of the town's involvement, once it goes pole. You also have your CapEx cost, which is where the one point four comes in. We did an estimate, and when Brian did his estimate for the town, I think it was about three point five for the entire project. We, like I said, are trying to be very, very conservative. We estimate the town to have around two thousand six hundred and ten poles. We came up with this number of one point two five million dollars for the make-ready, based upon an average of four hundred and eighty dollars per pole. And then, in the towns up in Vermont, it was less than four hundred dollars per pole. So, there's eighty dollars of cushion there, because the cost for make-ready costs are going up. However, if CMP is willing to work with the town to make broadband a reality, then costs might come to be down. We also took eighty-four thousand dollars and put it aside for the police details. Normally, the utility companies put that into their make-ready expense, into that four hundred dollars. We break it out just so people are aware, there's gonna be police details or flaggers, or whatever's the most cost-effective, or whatever the local rules call for. So, there's cushion in there two ways, both on the police details and also at the four hundred and eighty dollars per, you know, per pole. There's also legal miscellaneous, and again, a hundred thousand dollars for the house and power, the network electronics. As I said earlier, Petersham's doing it for thirty-two thousand dollars. So, there's room here for people to save money, you know? And it's, like I said earlier, it's in our best interest for this cost to be as cost-effective for the town as possible. Because in the end, if we're able to do a network that costs the taxpayers nothing, then everybody loves it. It's a win-win for everybody. And the lower the cost, the monthly cost is, the more willing people are gonna be to sign up for service. Now, as far as paying for all of this, there's different avenues. I'm not sure if there's like stabilization funds, or free cash, or community block grants that are available that could help reduce the fee. Excuse me. Also, I know that Connect Maine, when they put together their plan, which I think was actually written by Brian, they are asking the state to provide twenty-five percent of any public-private partnership costs, which in this case would almost work out perfectly. I think here, it's about thirty percent with the higher number. I think when the actual number comes in, it'll be around twenty-five percent. So, if you're able to get a Connect Maine grant that covers all of your costs, then it becomes almost a no-brainer. You're getting a fiber-optic network for free. The one thing I haven't mentioned, which I think is very important, one of the main differences you're gonna see from our plan versus anything else you're gonna see in the world, is after three years, we offer the town of Rangelie the option to purchase the network. It's a set fee that each year comes down by a set amount, so that in the end, after twenty years, the buyout number is ten dollars. So, we are betting on ourselves providing really superior service and a superior product, that, you know, if the town's not happy with us, you can buy all the equipment. The fiber's gonna be the same for us as it would be for consolidated or somebody else, but we're willing to bet on ourselves in that manner, and we're willing to put our money where our offense. Having said that, worst-case scenario, the town had to pay one point four six million dollars. You could do a municipal lease, which shouldn't impact your borrowing capacity. Every state is different. It would probably work out to about twenty-five dollars per subscriber at between a sixty and a seventy percent take rate, and we just add that on to the monthly fee. So, instead of now being ninety-five dollars per month, it's a hundred and twenty dollars per month. But again, none of the costs are coming from the taxpayers. If the people don't want this service and they don't sign up for service, then they don't have to pay anything. If people do sign up for service, then for seven years, it's a hundred and twenty dollars. That municipal fee is set by the town. So, once that municipal lease is done, that cost could come right off the bill. So, it goes from a hundred and twenty back down to ninety-five, if that makes sense. And again, there's all different things that you could do that would affect that cost, but that twenty-five dollars per subscriber is pretty much the worst-case scenario. And even at the worst-case scenario, as I showed earlier, you're saving six hundred and sixty dollars per year, you're still saving money if you're the subscriber at a hundred and twenty dollars.
But every taxpayer's gonna have a buy-in, correct?
What do you mean?
What I mean is, if we're asking the town of Rangelie to come up with one point whatever, that's coming out of our taxpayers, it's not coming out of...
No, it's municipal lease, so...
Didn't you say there's two plans, one is a lease and one is not, or did I...
No, I'm saying a lease is an option. So, if you don't want it to come off, you know, be part of the tax bill, you could do the municipal lease, and that basically, you're signing the full faith and credit of the town, but it's treated completely differently. You know, it's like if when you lease a fire truck, it's basically the same thing.
So, subscriber would, only subscribers would pay?
Yes.
For the municipal part of it.
Right, and you could adjust that with the subscriber's paying, based upon the number of subscribers. You would tell us what the municipal fee is gonna be, we would collect it, and then we would give you the money, you know, quarterly or however often you want us to give you the money. So, there might be a surplus, they might be collecting more money than you need, at which point, you can go back and say, "Well, let's reduce that monthly fee." Or, "Let's use that extra money for like, you know, subsidizing the elderly or, you know, disadvantaged youths." It'd be up to the town. And again, these costs, like I'll ask Brian, do you feel these are very conservative? The costs that we did?
Yeah, no, I think overall, the costs are conservative and...
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Just a couple miscellaneous things. Like I said, you'd have two choices for your equipment. If you just wanted to use your own router and your own stuff, we find that people do Apple. A lot of towns will have an Apple router, and they just want Apple products in their house, this'll be fine. If you want to just pay one price and be done with it, and have the latest technology, then this is the way to go. It's completely up to the subscriber, we're happy either way. We're just trying to make sure that we're accommodating different people. The installation would be three hundred feet from the road, or at some place, it's from the pole line, which might be running through the woods. That's the case in a couple places in Petersham. For more than three hundred feet, there might be an additional charge. We usually find this to be about a dollar per foot. And it's three hundred feet via the aerially or via underground conduit, as long as it's usable underground conduit. If it's not usable conduit, it's up to the homeowner to provide us usable conduit to connect to the house. Again, like I mentioned, it's a twenty-four-month commitment. We're guaranteeing the standard tier to be, to meet or beat the FCC definition. So, today, it's twenty-five down and three up. If tomorrow, it changes to sixty down and sixty up, we would, by agreement, we would have to raise our minimum standard rates, or our minimum standard speeds. The standard internet speed, rate, I should say, sorry, I got messed up. The ninety-five dollars per month is set, and that's set for two years. After that, we'd be able to raise that price by the Consumer Price Index increase for that given year, and that's it. Any increase above and beyond that would have to be approved by the town of Rangelie. So, if there was like, you know, some extenuating circumstance that came up, where we really need to raise the cost, we'd go to the town and say, "This is why we need to raise the cost." We'd have to agree with them. If you don't, then we can't raise the price. On the hundred megabits, we'd be able to raise the rates on that, but on the standard rate, we're giving you basically control over the standard price, because we want to be a good partner. You know, we don't want people to think, "Well, yeah, but..." You know, we don't want people to think, well, yeah, but they give us $95 per month, that's great, but then next year, they're really going to raise the rates. No, we're an engineering company, we're not trying to... And also, I mentioned this in cases any real estate agents in the house. When they're trying to sell a home, it's almost impossible now if there's no broadband. Young families with kids don't want to move anyplace that doesn't have high-speed internet. If the homeowner pays for the installation fee, the two-year commitment doesn't come into play until that home is sold and occupied. You know, so we'll work with the real estate agents, we'll work with different people. Again, we're trying to get as many subscribers as possible to make the network as successful as possible.
So to go back to Cindy's question, if you were a developer, then you had 12 homes you were building, you could pay $400 for each home, and it would count towards our 500?
Yeah.
But even though you wouldn't be set up right away, because you still...
Yeah. And what I should also mention too, as far as that deposit, that first $200, that's fully refundable. We usually ask that that money be held by the town treasurer, just so that people have the comfort to know, I mean, listen, if I'm not happy with, you know, with, you know, how long this is taking, I can get my money back, that comes from the treasurer. Or we could handle that money, it depends, you know, whatever the town wants.
See, all the stars align and everything, everybody wants to do this, and we're all ready to go, all the paperwork's been done. Physically, how long will it take you to hook up 500 people?
In the town of Leverett, which is a town of 811 homes, including the make-ready work, it took us 18 months to completely complete the network and hand it over. That was a very aggressive schedule. What we're finding now is the make-ready work has taken longer than normal. We can normally build out at a rate of about a mile per day. So you've got 84 miles, takes us 84 business days to build up that. And then you tack on about 30% on top of that, because the way it works is, we build out a mile of road, and a second crew comes in behind them and starts connecting the houses that we just built out to. So we normally say in two years is a, you know, reasonable amount of time.
So someone like myself, kind of rent, so if I were to give you the $400 installation fee, and then this comes up, or whatever, and I go to move, I'm moving to a house that didn't sign up right now, am I going to have to pay a $1,500 signup fee at that time?
We would work with you. You would be our subscriber, so that equipment, this equipment at that house, you basically pay for. So you could take this, bring it to us and say, I'm moving, I want to bring this with me. And we work with you. That person who owns the house would have to pay a new installation fee to, you know, to make up the fact that they...
That was one of my questions, if I'm a homeowner of an apartment building or whatever, if I don't have tenants in there that want internet, can I ask to have the installation put in, and then, you know, as I get a new renter or whatever, then they can have a service?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, you know, even, even Grandma's home next door to me, she doesn't want it.
She doesn't want it, you know...
But if she paid for the installation, then when her kids sell her house when Grandma's gone...
Yeah, we had a number of cases like that in Petersham, where they wanted to have the service, but Grandma's living there now, she's not going to live there much longer, unfortunately. But they want to make sure that, you know, they're able to sell the house. And we'd absolutely work.
You would be contributing to getting them to have 39% of the fee. So it would make sense for them to do that.
And again, we tried to work with people. We're not a faceless company. You'd be able to call me and say, this is the situation. I'm normal, I just say, okay.
What happens is, say, five years down the road, you've been here for two years and everything's copacetic, and somebody wants to build a subdivision. Are you going to charge them $1,500 each, each building?
No, we'd probably work with the builder. Like we said, you know, charging $400, or $500 if he wants to provide the voice service too. But, you know, just make sure that, they would have to make sure that if they're building like underground utilities, that they're providing us a conduit. A conduit where it pulls string, we're happy.
Okay.
That's the big thing, is making sure that that's available. Now, the town would be responsible for providing us the right of way, so say if it's a new development, there's a new road building in. Normally, you should be telling the utility companies that any new poles that go in should have municipal space on it, so if you want to put the fiber, the fiber can go on that pole at no, you know, additional make-ready cost. But you guys have to provide us the right of way.
So you would work with somebody if they wanted, you know, a few years after you set up there, they wanted to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you're going to have a bunch of houses right jammed into each other.
And I actually thought you were going someplace, which I'm glad, like, my mind went there, because it's an important point, is with the buyout option, we actually take all the physical assets of this build, and we put it into a new LLC, so that you know, when you, if you exercise the buyout option, exactly what's included with the buyout price. And also, because it's in a new LLC, that also protects the town. So we have three principal owners of the company. They all take a trip to Bermuda, and their plane goes down, right? The town is protected because all of the assets are in the LLC, and you are the only ones that have the rights to purchase those assets. So that's always comes up, is like, you know, what happens, you're privately held or whatever. One of the first steps, in order to figure out how much this would cost the town as far as providing the right of way, is to know the number of poles in town, right? And the only way to know the number of poles is to do a pole survey. And that pole survey includes the data of what's on the pole, the GPS location for that pole, and some other information that's required for the utilities. It's not cheap to do these surveys. We would charge about $24 per pole to do a survey. You'd be free to hire another company to do the survey, because the pole is where it is. As long as they're accurate as far as pulling the GPS data, you know, anybody would be able to use that information when they do the CAD drawings. What I would suggest as far as the next steps would be the two, these two next steps. One, is if you are interested in this, we're happy to put our polls into writing and provide it to the board of selectmen, so that you see, you know, exactly what we're offering, and, you know, what the different terms and conditions would be. We've already done the agreement with the town of Petersham, so basically, to the most part, the name of the town will change. But you'd be able to see all the information that's already, you know, been reviewed. And that document was reviewed by our attorneys in Jersey, it was reviewed by Compliment and Page, who does most of the municipalities in western Massachusetts. And it was also reviewed by Leclair Ryan, which is one of the largest law firms in Boston. So we feel very comfortable as far as, you know, us covering all the bases. So we wouldn't have to...
Why are you reinventing the wheel? Why are you going out and surveying every pole, CMP can't provide you that information?
They can't. What are you talking about?
They own it.
They own the pole, but you'd be, Brian...
They will not provide that information. They have it. Fairpoint, or Consolidated has it, and neither pole owner will provide it. And that's not...
Even though you're going to give them money for...
You're, for Consolidated, they'll be competing with them. Why the power companies won't provide it, I don't have a logical answer.
What's the, what's the answer from PUC?
Actually, the PUC has an ongoing investigation into three parts. They revised the make-ready rules as the first part. The second part is to look at all the rates. And the third part, the third phase, which hasn't begun yet, will examine issues like that, that could be implemented to lower the overall cost of make-ready. CMP is one of the worst in terms of the make-ready process. They're typically the longest delay, and take the longest to perform the make-ready work. So the PUC is on top of it, but they have more issues with CMP than just make-ready. I think they're prioritizing...
Well, with the cost being as high as you're suggesting, doesn't it, in terms of negotiating acquisition to get onto the poles? I mean, I'm sure you must have, I hope you've tried it, you know, we'll offer you this much more money, give us this information to reduce our upfront costs.
Yeah, the sad secret is, and again, one of our largest billing customers is Verizon. And if a pole is jointly owned, normally, if somebody wants to attach to that pole, they have to do their own survey. And then utility companies will go back and do their own survey on top of that, even though it's their own poles, and you'd think they would already have that data. But the fact is, a lot of these poles were put in before there was computers. You know, so they would, they would have to resurvey the poles to make sure everything is accurate. And because the poles are jointly owned, both the utility companies will probably end up surveying the same pole, which makes no sense. You know, you'd think that utility customers would have agreements, say, well, company will go out there and survey the pole. You end up having three surveys done on the same pole. You know, common sense in utility companies don't always go hand in hand.
All right, thank you.
So you're telling me the town arranger could not call up CMP and say, can I have this information? And they're not going to give it to them?
That's correct.
What the heck?
What I would suggest is, I would, I would contact Connect Main and say, we're looking at this, we expect it to cost this, is there any chance of us getting a grant for this? Because I think, just for the data collection, because this would fall into line with their, with their purpose of being.
Well, actually, that, that doesn't fall within the Connect Main's creative authority.
With a community block grant?
You're not running for office, I can tell.
I'm not, I'm just...
Good.
That's not an option that's available right now.
Yeah, and the way we got that number is simple math of, if there's 83.4 miles, and it's 5,280 feet in a mile, the average pole spans are normally about 170 feet, so you just do the math, you come up with 2,610. A lot of times, the pole spans would be higher than that, it might be 200 feet, you know, especially in, you know, less the sparse, more sparsely populated areas. But 170, again, that's kind of conservative.
So you provide $80,000 for a pole survey, you own that survey?
You own it, that becomes your data. We would use that data to create our maps, but that, that would be your data.
Bring a check though?
Well, just my fear is, who comes in tomorrow with a better mousetrap, I can spend a $1.44?
Well...
Is it Dave's mousetrap? Is it Donny's mousetrap? Is it mine? Because I'm so knowledgeable with internet. I just see when we come up with a buyout mousetrap.
Let me throw a term...
Now, you're competing in a world that Dave or myself or Donny says, I can do it for $60,000, and everybody's going to jump on both of you.
Let me throw one term at you, and then another risk at you. The term is not exclusive, our agreement with the town would be not exclusive. So if somebody else came along and said, you know what, we think we have better fiber, we want to put it up on the pole, town would be free to work a deal with them as well. The other thing I'd mention is, we would need 500 subscribers to start off with. That's to start off with, right? That's the one thing that we need in order to say, all right, now we're going to start construction. It becomes our risk to make sure that we maintain at least 500 subscribers. If somewhere down the road, you know, Elon Musk comes up with his satellites, and everyone wants satellites, and we start losing subscribers, that's, that's on us. You know, we've, you know, we've already...
Yeah, but see, but I said you put it, I just sort of checked for 1.4, we don't want it really big. But with 1.4, we already put out.
Yeah.
And now a better guy, a better mousetrap, we're us.
Yeah, but we've put up 3.5 million dollars.
After the two years, you as a consumer could get out of it, just like we could...
That's what I'm saying, but I understand you putting 3.5 million.
Right, and also, if you do the municipal lease, and you're going to put all the responsibility for paying that $1.4 million on the subscribers, then only the people who've actually gotten the service are actually paid. The average taxpayer or the taxpayer in Rangeley who didn't take service didn't pay anything. They didn't risk anything.
Let me, 20 minutes. Every year, you pay a license fee on each one of those poles.
Right.
And that would continue on.
We do, or you do?
That would be collected by us, but it would be passed on to the subscriber.
So if you start out with 500 subscribers, something new and better comes along, and now you only have 100 subscribers, you're still renting each one of those poles.
Every one of those, 26.4.
Until you remove your attachment.
Right.
So that's a risk.
We just went down this road with the cable. I mean, that television...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't consider this, I'm just, I wanted to clarify there, that, that...
They never paid their rent, they let them jump on.
There is risk on both sides.
Yep.
Well, just recognize Larry's point. We have cable struggle over this time for the cable company.
Yeah.
No cable TV.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how that would affect the make-ready costs. It could go either way. There's already space being taken up by, in the communication space. Utility companies might say, you remove that, and that's all you have to do. And you could put your fiber up where that coax cable is. I don't know if that would ever fly. If CMP is saying that they want to work with the town, that'd be one thing to help.
Actually, who's paying for that now?
No one.
Jackson Mill.
I mean, it's an asset that could be utilized.
Well, space, you mean?
Space.
Could be utilized, not the coax cable.
No, there's an attachment there already, there's a high-strength steel strand.
Well, you and I both know that they're going to say, I'm sorry, these attachments don't work, that we're going to have the $62 one instead of the $48 one.
I mean, you can get it now over a dish, I mean, Dish Network and Direct TV, but it's slower than...
The other thing about cable is cable, the cable was stranded to a country, it wasn't to the entire town of Rangeley.
Oh, I'm not...
Yeah, right, I mean...
No, and that distinction is important.
Yeah, absolutely.
But recognizing, we have some experience in a company coming in and selling us shoving full of equipment back there that's not utilized anymore.
Yeah.
And there's satellite dishes up at the airport that aren't utilized anymore, and there's cable, and there's...
Which is why we built in our protections. You have the buyout option, you have the fact that, you know, we have to have a certain number of subscribers to start off with, but then it's up to us to maintain that number. So all the risks, after the make-ready is paid, pretty much all the risk gets transferred to us, and the subscribers.
Please don't, I'm not trying to throw cold water, so I just want you to understand where some of the thought processes is.
And I recognize that there's, you know, coax cable on a lot of the poles, but how that would affect the make-ready, I don't know. Quite honestly, you don't run into that very often for a cable company with...
I would imagine CMP would cut you a great deal if you took all the staples out of the poles on Main Street.
I could take meows.
The pole survey I was going to mention too, just allows us to do like a data map, where we can figure out the best route to go with the fiber. So even though there might be, say, 3,000 poles in town, maybe we only use 2,500 because we find more efficient routes to go. And that might be a little bit, you know...
We have a special company, you just can't raise $80,000 for pole survey without...
We'd have the public hearings, whatever you want to discuss.
Well, I think it's important we get more than one presentation, quite honestly, I don't think this is the place to bring it up. I'd like him to finish that, but you're right.
Yep. Couple final things. Net neutrality, people ask about net neutrality. We support net neutrality 100%. We're not going to throttle one provider over another provider, and we're never going to sell the customer data to third parties. So we're willing to put that in writing, so I want to make sure people are aware of that. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, in addition to the town of Rangeley, we'd be willing to build a Rangeley plantation, Dallas plantation in Sandy River. But again, each one of those would be separate agreements between us and those entities. And thank you very much for letting me present this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Sorry, Larry.
All righty. Plug Rangeley and the plantations all into one, one thing. Could you do it for less?
Yeah, there really wouldn't be much economies of scale, because the cost of the build is on us, and the cost of the make-ready is going to be what it is. The pole attachments are normally like 200 pole per pole attachment applications.
Yeah, we had two.
Yeah, you know, Chris actually did come and present to Laura and myself, you know, last week, so we understood what he was going to be presenting you today. I'm with you, Steve, we're, you know, these are, this is an option for Rangeley, but the[1788.56][1788.59]internet, the need for high-speed internet in Rangeley is not going to go away, right? Just because we don't want to do something. So... So that is why we're looking at all of the options that are out there and working with the county to make sure that we don't ignore the fact, we just can't stick our heads in the sand continually and say, "Somebody might decide to come up here," you know, "and invest." Because what they're telling you, us, is they're not. You know, a local entrepreneur might, but the bigger companies at this point in time are not just investing in Rangelin without, right?
Yeah, and one, one last thing I'd like to say too, is like, we're not trying to force a plan on anybody. What we're looking to do is find willing partners who have a need that we can fill. And if, if there's any, you know, feeling like, "Well, this plan's not for us," then that's fine, we can offer, we're not trying to force it on anybody.
Good, thank you. Kate, I want, go ahead, Cindy.
And we've got Charlie Woodward coming at our November fifth meeting, and he would certainly know what other key players have any-
That's why Brian's here tonight.
Brian, yeah, that's right, because you were there when you presented to all of us in Rangelin plantation last.
Yeah, I can, I can just real quick share with you that, as we said in the report, we want to provide you with options. We're looking at it on a countywide basis, but each town will have to make its own choice as to what it does. We are working with some other providers, I can't go into it because we've signed NDAs where we can't share the information right now, but there will be other options presented to you. And at the end of the day, you're gonna need to weigh them against each other and, you know, select which one you might want to go with or not. So, there, there's gonna be more than one option for you.
Where do those options be available? Are there any available options?
Uh, we're in the midst of it now, so, um, none of this moves quickly.
Is this not a meeting you don't know to this community that tells you, "Okay, what have we got to fix this?" Look.
Yeah.
But I, I would imagine that certainly within six months, you're going to have other options presented to you.
I think it's important that all of the options request an audience as well and presentation so that we can have, from the board of selectmen's point, you know, a number of different things to look at, whether it goes through your office or whoever does it. I think this is wonderful tonight, gives us a lot to think about. Yes, sir, Mr. Boraga.
All the options.
Yes, Mark.
So when those, if there's other options presented at that time, would you ask Matrix for a written proposal so you'd?
Well, we, we could provide a written proposal either way, so we, we don't have to wait on, you know, other things. Also want to point in our favor, we, we didn't ask anybody for an N D A. You know, our plan is public, you know, this is what our offer is. If you have an issue with it, let us know, you know, if it's a real problem, we'll try to address it. Or if there's something in the contract language that would be different from Massachusetts versus Maine, we'll address that. But we're trying to be very accommodating.
I think written proposals are gonna be required from all that are interested, Mark.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any disagreement on the board regarding that, is there?
No.
Okay. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Yep, appreciate you coming by. Worcester, huh? You driving back tonight?
No, staying at, uh, Rangelin.
Wonderful.
I'm going bowling next.
We're down.
It's interesting, Kate, just to touch upon what you said earlier, when people call up to rent rooms, it used to be, granted, I'm old. Uh, do you have a doctor in the area?
Yeah.
Okay, now it's, you have internet. They don't even talk about doctors anymore.
This is just another reason though why supporting Charlie in the, in the Greater County, you know, President County Development Group is important, because these meetings, Larry, take hundreds of hours of time. And we are looking at just, you know, Rangelin, but they're looking, they're coordinating with all the whole county. And it's nice to have somebody compete on the street with knowledge, you know, going out and getting-
Well, you might want to hang on for the next topic, Kate.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Just a suggestion. And thanks again for all your input. Next one up is Greater Franklin County Development Council, a vote of support. I wanted to just ask the board, have you reviewed everything that was put in, that was sent to us?
Yes. That's the same one I just did.
Are there any points of clarification necessary? Oh, wait a second here.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Any points of clarification we could ask Brian? Because I'd like to have somebody make a motion to send a letter of support. I think, Cindy?
So, um, I do have a question. So the, the sixty thousand from the Kibbe Tiff, is that limited to certain towns within the county?
You don't know, Brian doesn't, he does, he's the internet.
My understanding is that Charlie's planning on-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that Charlie's planning on presenting at your next meeting.
What's being requested of us tonight is to preempt that meeting with a letter of support. And what I asked the board was, are there any points of clarification in the documentation that we received?
My understanding is, in prior years, the county has funded Greater Franklin County Development every single year, except for last year, they cut their funding. Is that correct, Charlie?
Can't you remember, was it last year or the year before that, where the county completely stopped funding, uh-
Just took that line out in amount. But we have funded it in previous years.
Yes.
And we utilize the service.
Okay, I, I was trying to avoid a lot of this, Kate, let me just fill you in, so it's your lead go. Right now, they're asking for a letter of support from everybody so that they can bring it to the county commissioners. He still will be here, it would be helpful to him, that's why I'm asking him to give that letter of intent now. Any other points?
No.
I need a motion.
Make a motion that the town of Rangelin, on behalf of the selectmen, send a letter of support to the Franklin County, Greater Franklin County Development Council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager report, department heads, anything you want to highlight, John? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Unite, thank you.
All right, calendar, November one, Avco, thirty-first annual planning day.
Yes, sir.
I gave you a list of the General Assembly representatives, and Cindy is the elected official, but Rangelin doesn't have an appointed official. Did you know you were an elected official?
I didn't.
You didn't?
No.
I think they just, you know, he's elected, there was a kind of a star there, I thought, I kind of took it as where the chairman is, that's what he gets to do.
Uh, she'll be voted on every year when they're, but I, I've served on this board for twenty years as a town manager representing Mexico and Mexico. Um, I asked, uh, Tom, if he, has he signed up to go to this? And if you appointed him as the other member, then he doesn't have to pay the thirty-five-dollar fee to go because the General Assembly members don't have to pay the, they go because it's the General Assembly meeting. But this is an annual, um, planning day, and it's usually attended by town managers, planning board people, coenforcement officers, uh, road tourmen, and it's quite a, you can see by the agenda. So, uh, I would recommend you appoint Tom as the second General Assembly member, and then we can notify them, and they might not charge us the thirty-five dollars.
That's a good recommendation. How about I open it up to the board of selectmen first, if they would, anybody here would like to be?
Probably both could, you need at least one elected official.
Cindy, do you want to stay on that?
I, it doesn't really matter if someone else feels more strongly, um, drawn to it.
Well, do you have a timeframe, I guess is probably?
Um, Thursday, November first, to attend.
Remember, that's hunting.
I, um, I just have to make dinner and have it ready, so, um, whenever he gets home, he gets home. Uh, let me just pull up the calendar. I think that's just a school meeting I don't need to attend. And I could probably go.
Was it?
Yeah, I could, I could, I could attend.
Are we good with having Tom go? I say yes.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to vote to appoint him as the other member?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to appoint Tom Lewis as the, um, second Rangelin General Assembly representative.
Second.
All in favor? There you go.
I, I would just like to make a point, it's just really nice to have input like this from an experienced town manager who has noticed the value of, of resources like this that-
Especially if you notice the afternoon session, one thirty to three marijuana laws and ordinance bill.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're into right now, so.
Yeah.
They usually have really good programs that are, you know, twice a year, they have another one in the spring.
So we can only elect one? Or two?
Two.
Well, I'm just, now I'm just saying that, for example, it looks like some of the other topics, like when I was reviewing, it's like more in the public works director category?
Yeah, no, the public works people could be part of it. Uh, you do have to have one elected, I'm not, you could have both.
I didn't say, I just see Lewiston, a bunch of them, but I know they're bigger.
Lewiston? Yeah, see, they, they have more because they want to be, Lewiston and Auburn, probably Auburn too, but they pay, yeah, see, they, if they pay the highest dues-
Yeah.
Like twenty-five grand, they're at the limit to do it, so, yeah, to get more representation.
If that elected officials means though, Cindy is elected to the board.
Right.
So you have to have at least one person that is elected.
One elected and then anybody else that's appointed.
I did it for five years, and it's where it's going. Really is.
And anybody can go, you just have to pay the minimum fee at thirty-five dollars, and pay for the meal, you know. But, uh, when I was in Mexico, boy, all the, whole planning board would go. And, and one of my selectmen and my coenforcement officer, I would go. Of course, that was the other route. But, yeah, they, we just always get recognized for having a whole table in this one town.
Nice.
But it was very informative, and it keeps you up to date. And back then, there was a lot of comprehensive planning that Avco specialized in, you know, John Maloney, Cindy, you may have heard of John Maloney, probably retired now, but, yep.
Strong guy.
Is he still there?
I emailed him the other day.
So it's a, it's a good organization to be part of, and it does represent our whole three counties.
Thank you, John. Um, don't forget, November fifth's a presentation from Greater Franklin County Development Council, November sixth, stated main official and referendum voting. I assume that's taking place in this room?
Mm-hmm.
Another fun day for you two. Any other business?
No, just, again, Paul, just missing the last meeting, but, uh, we did get to speak at the town meeting, and we voted unanimously to allow the selectmen to sell the land to Holman Springs. Could be a hundred new jobs or whatever. Well, so that's what it was about, and, you know, we wanted you to go, so.
We doing an executive session tonight?
I, I just, no, I've got, I've just got, I just wanted to raise, um, I'll pass this down. The Rangelin Public Library is having Senate District Seventeen candidates, um, on October twenty-fourth, so in two days, from six to eight P M. And, so they've got Jan Collins and Russell Black, Cynthia Soma Hernandez and Thomas Schofield, and Stephanie LeBlanc and Fran Head there, and it just would be nice, I mean, we, any number, because we'd be attending as citizens and not as selectmen, all five of us can go. If I don't, if I don't go to Matty's Home USM game, I'll go, but it just would be nice if there was some presence there, the library worked hard to get, but I just want to pass those down. Here's one for you.
Thank you.
And then, regarding the, and I guess, Tricia, what is the, what is the timeline we need to keep in mind for ordinances that are going to appear on the next town warrant for vote? When do you need the final draft? Because we've got to set up public hearings, et cetera.
I have to turn to that.
Okay.
They're all different, the zoning ones are gonna be different, they're to the marijuana ones. But it's, it's a lot of chapter thirty-eight, which Kristen is working on right now, the town's attorney, um, and there might be a little bit more to be added to that, that might be brought up to your next one.
Okay. All right, so.
Thank you, Cindy. Anything else?
Um-
Charlie? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
You sure?
I am sure.
How about over here to my right? Anything else? Just motion to adjourn. Oh! Mr. Boraga.
Not to wear this out, but, um, back to the environmental assessment, just for a minute. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, you weren't responsible for this, Steve, so don't take it personally, but it was authorized by the board of selectmen to spend a hundred and fifty thousand on this. The deadline for comments was January third. John says it was signed on January thirteenth, and for whatever reason-
Thirty-first, thirty-first.
Okay, give your thirty-first. This never, the board of selectmen, if, the consultant or the airport manager brought the final thing, you know, the people's comments weren't released till almost the end of the